I'd like to call this meeting to order, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty here by informing. All attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, if anyone else to report, they must let the pair. No. Alright, first up, we have some minutes.
Moving forward, minutes is submitted.
Date?
September twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Take seconds, any, any further discussion? Hearing nod, Conrad? Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Doug Donovan, hi. Um, correspondence, did I see anything?
Nope, we have nothing.
Nothing fun from Leonard?
Nothing fun, it's been quiet, we had that one stretch where there was a bunch of now, I don't, or they're forgetting to send us.
Summer break, yeah. Um, public comment?
Okay.
Um, we have no.
While we're on public comment, uh, let's show that we had an application for last meeting. We carried over to tonight, and it's not shown on the agenda. Is it safe to assume that those people have withdrawn their application?
Haven't spoken to them.
What?
So I have not spoken to them.
So, uh, perhaps we should.
We should leave it on the agenda for the next meeting. Next one, reach out to them.
Yeah, okay, if they don't want to come, that's fine, but you shouldn't forget them, we promised them they would have another chance to be heard.
Okay. Yeah, once we got more information and.
They were gonna do a survey.
Yeah.
Or, or that maybe they're gonna build something completely different and not need a permit, that was the two options that I remember.
I've, I've been in contact with, um, to a surveyor and a general contractor for that property, so I don't know if that's direction decided to go in, I have not spoken to anybody else.
Okay, well, we can put it on the agenda, it only costs a little extra in content.
Okay, next up, we have a Form A for one sixty, one eighty Laurel. Um, we have prints here in front of us. I guess the bearings on this.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Yep, hi, this is Mike Schaefer, how are you doing today?
Hello.
Good, thank you, this is Mike Schaefer from Huntley Associates, we're the ones that prepared the, uh, the A and R that you're looking at. And if you'd like, I can take you through it, I'm just trying to close out some of my screens here, I don't know, I got so many screens open.
Okay, would, would you be able to share it and walk us through, or?
Absolutely.
Good.
Sorry if I, if I pull up another project, we're working on a project trying to get it out, so I'm trying to, trying to keep it hidden. Let's see here, let's see, share. We know when you can see something.
There we go.
Alright, so, uh, first off, thanks for taking a look at this evening. And what we're doing is we're working for Catherine Hibbert, who owns one sixty, um, Laurel Street, as well as one eighty. And in essence, what the plan that you have in front of you is we are looking to, I'm trying to see if I can, doesn't look like I can draw anything here, but basically. We're looking to create a line, uh, across here, subdivide one eighty, so that this corner piece becomes part of one sixty. And that's kind of what you're looking at right here, you're looking at this, this corner here. Is in fact, this corner.
Um, designated lot A on our plan, right?
Correct. That's correct, so this lot A, right here that you see here is, uh, uh, this is, uh, what is this, one sixty, one eighty?
That's in a hole and that's in a hole.
This is one eighty, this is one sixty, she owns both parcels, and we're looking to just take off lot A and combine it to lot B.
Okay.
And then the remaining land here, uh, will be for this, uh, for this house that you see.
Okay, and that's, um. That's gonna bring that down to seventeen thousand square feet.
I believe you are correct, yes, or you are.
Can we do that?
Okay, yeah.
Twenty? Twenty-five percent decrease, because it's town's water sewer, right?
Oh.
Well, I thought they learned too. That's what they're gonna.
Taking, taking this, this off of this one.
Right, I thought it was the other way around.
I did too.
So, um, Mike, I think our question right now is you're bringing that lot size down to seventeen thousand square feet.
Seventeen thousand, no, what is it?
Yeah, this is neighborhood.
Seventeen thousand seven hundred.
Fifty-one, yep.
Yeah, there was a rule, um, there was a zoning rule. About why that was allowed to go underneath twenty thousand square feet.
I think there is because it's got town water and sewers, correct?
Yes, correct, let me look up, let me pull up, uh.
Yep, just, just, um, due diligence, you know?
Yep. I don't know if we explain it here in the A and R. Form, I don't see that, if you bear with me a minute, I can pull up the regulation. Sorry, I should have been, uh. Let me see, probably be in here, Dave, where'd you have it?
In our density under the footnotes.
Yes, correct.
Can you reduce to like fifty percent? Twenty-five percent for either fifty percent.
Yeah.
What I did.
Might be in the form.
You got the footnotes there? Of course you do.
Didn't we eliminate cable one?
But we kept that.
We kept that, that rule.
We kept.
In all zones, we're a lot serviced by town sewer, the minimum lot size was by fifty percent, and we're a lot serviced by either town or sewer or water, but not both minimum lots, twenty-five, that is what we voted on.
Yeah, there was a, I'm looking, no, there was a, uh, hold on, there was actually a.
We're all set. We're all set.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's item number four, right?
Yeah.
In the article, or Article nine, item four.
Yeah, anybody have any questions on this one?
Nope.
No.
That. I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, alright, Gordon.
Yeah, just a question on the lot line, it looks like they have a structure back there near the lot line. I know our accessory building's gonna be within ten feet, I'm just not sure. Um, what that dimension is, or if they don't have it spelled out, they probably should, as to what that structure is and how far they are from their new boundary, that's all, thank you.
Talking about the shed, Gordon?
Must be the shed, yes.
Is the shed even a structure under our bylaw?
Yeah, sheds have, sheds have to be more than ten feet from a boundary, and maybe they have to move it, but I don't think you can create a new non-conformity. Yeah, I mean, that, that, that shed was, yeah, that shed was already there.
Yeah, we mentioned it, we mentioned to Catherine the same thing, and she said that she would move it.
Yeah, cuz I would think, Mr. Chairman, that they would have to move it to make sure they're not closer than ten feet, otherwise it's a new non-conformity, you can't do that.
Correct. They gotta do non-conformities going on here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Catherine, the applicant had mentioned, Catherine had mentioned that she would move it.
Okay, and that, um, this, you surveyed this?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, um, that rear boundary line's interesting how it jogs like that.
Yeah, there were some real issues up there that we had to do a couple extra, a couple extra days out there to figure something out.
Yeah, there was a weird sale, the original owner of that lot bought, um. Five rods from the neighbor to the south, and then twenty years later, the neighbor to the north sold him another rod's worth of width. That's why it's sixteen and a half feet there to the north. Wide.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, this thing, so it used to be like this, Dave?
Yeah, I had to go to the early eighteen hundreds to find that specified out.
He, we have a, we have a, Dave time travels.
Yeah.
And, and where, where was it thought to be prior?
Well, the, at some point, so the deeds, um. Specified that, you know, going forward, then at some point, some lawyer decided that he was just gonna call it a hundred feet by something else and. And forget all the details, and, uh, that, that I'm talking about the.
He asked where it was before.
Uh, Cameron Basin, um, there, the, that big lot to the north.
Yep.
That line, the, what is that, one sixty-seven?
Yeah, they can't see that.
Yeah, the one sixty-seven point seven nine line?
Yeah, that used to go all the way to the street.
Yeah, so it used to be like, it used to be like this.
Yep.
What is the, uh, on lot one eighty, you have the house number one eighty marked with cross-hatchings on the inside of the boundary, what is the larger area? To the, to the east of that, that is?
Oh, that's fenced in area.
And this?
Yeah, it's a fenced in yard.
I see, okay, so that's a fence line.
Correct.
So, um, so, so in doing this survey, um. You discovered that neighbor lost some property that they thought they had.
Um, well, they thought they had because their, their deed is, was written wrong, not when they bought it, but a few, actually a few sales back. So it used to say, you know, that, that big lot on top used to say, um, this such and such a land. Accept the one rod with sold to blah, blah, blah. And then at some point, somebody dropped that language out. Um. For no reason other than expedience, they converted it, you know, and they just made it a rectangle, and it wasn't a rectangle.
Mm-hmm.
So, but the answer to your question is yes, the, 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 the language had been lost in subsequent deeds from when it was first done.
Right, uh, what, yes, uh, that that never got picked up.
Correct.
Yep.
And, and, and what happens is, once there's a deed written, most lawyers going forward just punt that same description over and over, so. As soon as somebody makes a mistake, it's a mistake for the next sixty years.
Until somebody, until somebody surveys it like us and figures it out, or there's a title search done.
Yeah, yeah, usually a title search is done when.
Yeah.
The previous care of this area found that same jog as well, he didn't give it any numbers because then it wasn't his focus, but he showed it.
Okay.
So this line isn't contested, right?
Yeah, so this, uh, property line's not contested with anyone?
Not that I know of.
That we're aware of.
The neighbor to the north.
Yeah. Okay. Right, Peg, any questions?
I mean, they have, all the deed references are here.
Yeah.
I mean, all, all the deed references are there, so if there was any question, you know, they'd be able to see that.
Yeah, if you're more than one deed, so that they can actually go back to those old deeds and read when it all happened.
Yeah, that retaining wall's right on the line now.
Right, I think that retaining wall was, uh, helping me, helping support that jog too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and those trees just happen to line up nice.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't use those for my, for my calculations, they just happened to land right on pretty close.
Okay. Conrad, anything?
No, I thought they moved the shed.
Dave?
No, I'm, I'm just kidding, but.
Peter?
All set.
Um, I get a motion to endorse?
I'll make the motion to endorse, as long as they move the shed, proper business from property.
Okay.
Second.
I think, uh, we will, and like I said, Catherine had indicated, we'd indicated that to her, that there might be a possibility you have to move it, and she said she would move it to make sure there is no question.
Okay. Uh, okay, any further discussion? Going around the room, Conrad?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Doug Donovan, hi.
Did have a Sharpie somewhere right here.
It's a third of my life.
Part of my life.
Dave, the bottom, you're the first one.
All right, we will let, we will let Catherine know how much she has to move it, so that it's out of the way.
Yeah.
Uh, and that'll take care of it.
Today's date is the twenty seventh of October.
That's not mine, I know, you'll see.
Uh, one month, one month, uh, someone from my office be able to stop by and pick it up?
Tomorrow?
Oh, okay, it won't be that quick.
Uh, just not Friday, I'm, I'm in the rest of them.
Just not Friday, you said?
Yes, correct.
Okay, no problem.
You can just, I, I believe Kathy, I think, has my emails, you can just send me an email when you guys are planning to come, and I'll make sure that everything is packaged up for you.
Very well, appreciate it. All right, thank you very much, everybody, appreciate your time.
Have a good night.
Good night.
It depends.
Don't still have data on that, those. You guys gotta give the Mylar.
This is five.
Adam, all?
Not the Mylar.
It's only has four. Yes. You can't even move your, your significant, please.
I got.
That says five. Yours.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. That's the one.
The lawyers depend on. Third, it depends. There they.
There we go.
Okay. Great. Yeah.
Hey, that one's done, um. Next up. Yeah, well, it's just, you gotta wait till the end, okay? Come on. That was.
I know.
Sure. Yeah. It'd be good news if I have you part of the SK Design Group, uh, here on behalf of Soul Fitness. And with me is Justin and Ashley, so it's gillner's property in the business. Um, quick history, as you may know, they were before your board, I believe it was in two thousand fifteen roughly, with a site cover review. Um, at least the site plan review, I guess I didn't quite catch when it was all special. But it was approved, they opened in two thousand sixteen, um, they bought the building several years later, and they've been there for, we're coming up on, within a ten years. Years, uh, so they're looking at putting addition on the building, that's why we're here before you. Um, and if I can share my screen, which works. There we go, it's, it was very well. I think talking through the plan. This is the property, of course, um, like I said, Soul has been there for almost ten years, to the left or to the west is Jehovah Witnesses, I believe, is their facility. Building, the right is, um, one of the doggy daycares, it's changed names at the time or two, so I don't have exactly the film is now. Uh, the building is somewhat close to the road, and there's a parking lot in the rear, and that's where they want to put the addition to the rear of the building. Um, quick note, I had a discussion with Matt Colmer, building commissioner, which means I'm an enforcement officer. Then what, what is the path for permitting of this, and he suggested my recite plan, again, which is why I'm here. I'm gonna go to a couple of other figures. So bear with me while I get right to, I think the pictures often help, just give that one the bearing, yeah, that's whereabouts they are in town, just south of Route one oh two. Um, across from the old, uh, that area, no, that area, place, so, sorry, across the old, the lanes. Um, here is the, uh, property with the addition to the rear, this one is important because this shows the floodplain. There's floodplain at the rear of the property, the light blue horizontal lines, that's considered the hundred-year floodplain. And these maps are a little bit tricky sometimes, because the black is a five hundred-year floodplain. It doesn't really spell it out that clearly, at the matter of interpreting it and understanding what you're looking for. And I don't know if I've ever had a project set up with a five hundred-year flood, it's always the hundred-year flood, the one percent chance. Um, and so the building is well beyond both of those. Uh, on a side note, the project has received conservation commission approval, same site plan that was submitted with your application is the plan of conservation commission approved. Uh, this is just in the sectors map, showing you the property, um, you know, from the general one oh two, and, and the rear, actually a bunch of the train tracks. Uh, this is probably a good picture to kind of wrap your head around the project with the aerial photo, uh, of course, building kind of close to the road, some parking in the front. Addition to the rear, um, not quite exactly the same size as the existing building, so it's not quite double in size, when all said and done. But what they're looking at doing is expanding their business, more room, more business, more equipment, more classes, and I'm sure they can give you a lot more information on that, if that's, uh, of interest. Um, the site plan that was submitted with the application, oh, this is just another zoning map, we're in the I District. Industrial District is the, is the zone district range. And then I included a couple of photos, just so everyone gets the bearing of the front of the building, no work happening there. Here, the rear of the building, the addition will extend off the rear, it's not quite the full width of the building, it stays in several feet from either side. Uh, mainly to avoid a side step back, I'll show you in just a second while I show the site plan. But it does extend off the rear of the building forty feet, sixty feet in width. Uh, kind of a, not quite generic, but this is actually what the building's gonna look like from the rear, arguably, no one's gonna see it from the road, I mean, it's, it's gonna be behind the main building, and it's set at a lower elevation. The new floor will be five feet lower than the existing floor, the way the existing building was built, it's, it's, um. It's set up closer to highway elevation, so as the property drops off the rear, there's, there's a drop on the rear. Um, and then finally, here is the site plan that was prepared for the conservation commission permit, and it fit nicely with this project. Um, Berkshire Engineering handled the, the conservation commission permitting, just the way it worked out, and I'm here helping out the site plan review. Um, existing building in the white rectangle, proposed addition, the darker gray, rear. This dash line on the right indicates a setback off the property line, same on the left. Um, the one on the right is slightly closer, there is, I think there's about a two-foot, a colored buffer there. Um, never recommend building directly on a setback lane. Kind of obvious reasons, if you're, if you're off by an inch or two, you could actually.
So the original building is in the set.
Yeah, so I did a little research on this, I believe, so the previous owner of the building, not Justin Ashley.
Yeah.
Built the building, I think they had to go get a variance after the fact.
Was this, did we do this one?
This is timing too fast.
This is, this one, okay. But he did the whole string of them, didn't he?
It was, he did the, um, well, he, did he rebuild where the marble?
Or he had the marble?
Was that, was that F W?
Yeah. Oh, that's right, yeah. No, that was BFW was separate, this was, he had a power equipment in there at one, that's what it originally was.
Um. I did some research, and I, it was hard for me to find again, because I think when it was issued, it was recorded in the registry deeds, but it wasn't by address, and if it's not recorded properly in registry. You can spend hours trying to track it down, anyways, yeah, I, I think the original building maybe needed a variance, so it was built, it's like.
Hmm.
That's all another story, we're not asking for variance, because you know that can be, I was.
You're not, you're not in the set.
You're not in the set, no. We shared this plan with the building department, um, so they're aware of what's, it's proposed. Um, like I said, we're here for a site plan review. Um, I put my, although I'm not on a planning board, I put my planning board hat on and said, what are your concerns that we all often talk about? Things like this, um, things that come up, lighting, landscaping, parking, sewer water, the perging on the town, et cetera. Um, it's out of town sewer, it's out of town water, um, we're not changing any of the front, right, so the front stays unchanged. Anything to the rear, if there was some lighting, it might be a couple of lights on the side of the building, just for, you know, typical building code stuff. We're actually proposing some plantings along both edges, called east and the west. Uh, partially as part of the conservation commission requirements, it's a little hard to see on this plan, but it is in there. See if I can. Uh, it was, yeah, proposed arborvitaries on this edge. Um, some additional plantings to the rear, just to help with, um, runoff from the parking lot. Um, that's a conservation commission, some shrubs and, and other bushes down to the side. Uh, again, putting my, my planning board hat on, um, one thing that would jump out at me is parking. Apparently you're cutting into some of the parking that's there now. So, I put together this plan today, so you don't have it on record, but I obviously can share with you. This is my, um. Potential layout for it. I use the facility, I go there quite a bit, uh, so I can speak to it with a certain level of confidence, plus, a little bit as an engineer. You can easily fit ten parking, ten cars up in front of the building. I believe you could fit another eighteen to the rear of the building. Um, you can see rows of eight, this two over here seems a little bit odd, they have a couple of employees or trainers, if they need to, they'll park in there, and then, you know. Um, if they get double parked in, it's not the end of the world for an employee. Um, this was, this shows twenty-eight parking, I think if you wiggled a little here and there, maybe you fit thirty, I don't think you're fitting much more than thirty. Talking it over with the, the applicants, if they have thirty cars there, that's a really good day.
Um, with, with the square footage where we at?
So, I, so that's the tricky part too, I cannot find in your zoning bylaws what use would relate to parking for this project. Oh, so you have like, you know, you might have a retail store.
Yeah.
You have a, a grocery store, you have office space, this is kind of on its own, and there's, at least I could find, I gladly put me in the right direction. You know, you might have, again, a commercial space or residential space, there's nothing quite like this. So I didn't really have a good point to start with there, so I just put on like, how many cars could really fit there, and, and talking it over with the, the owners, you know, what makes sense? And they could have anywhere from thirty to forty clients slash customers, whatever, a day, that's not all at once. They usually don't see more than ten or twelve people at a single time, uh, roughly, and ten to twelve, good day, fifteen, and they're there for an hour, and then they just, they, they rotate out. Um, so to say that you can fit twenty-eight, maybe thirty, a little bit of a stretch, they arguably, they probably won't even hit twenty, a busy day. So in my opinion, parking, uh, can, um, there's some areas where it's a little bit tight, but you know, this is, um. This isn't big Y where there's a thousand cars coming and going every day, I think it's a little bit momentum. Uh, that is generally the post-project, and we're happy to discuss. Do you have any questions?
Are you adding any bathrooms?
No, no, actually, so that rear addition, it's wide, forty by sixty wide open space, they're gonna clear span of the trusses. Really gonna kind of be, um, what, what's the thought, well, except for stairs, um, in a, in a, in a wheelchair, everything else is wide, what's really the intent?
Um, it's, I would say the better serve the community, I work a lot of, but athletes and, um. Plus, they're just, uh, yeah, they're a classroom, um, so we do a lot of seniors classes, we do a lot of. The different stuff, like that area, push sleds and home ropes and things like that, so this, this wide space, that helps.
Use that. Give them more opportunity for, for different classes, and they, they'll get, I've been there when there's been a group class of ten or twelve people, and where there are now, it's pretty tight. Um, and just let us what you can do, and it's just, it's just, this just helps the business, and it lets them provide more services, and they'll fit in more quickly.
Okay, anybody else, any questions?
Yeah, Conrad. Double question, um, I was here this morning, there's.
We'll get you, Gordon.
There's excavation going on beyond the building right now.
Correct, they were issued a foundation only permit, at the, at their own risk, one hundred percent, had that discussion with the building department.
The fourth wall excavation is all there, yeah.
The excavation started, they haven't poured any concrete. Unless they.
No, that's more, they said they're.
They were supposed to do the way.
Um, you're gonna park it in the front, you're gonna park it in the back, is that gonna be paved parking?
No, um, essentially what it is now, which is primarily gravel, unless, it's still, it's primarily gravel now, it's kind of like the, um, reclaimed asphalt, as you can tell. And there's patches here and there, they did some patches with rocks, you get piled, no, no proposed, not complete payment. Speaking for them, it's not cost a lot of money, they're not ready to jump on that, tens of thousands of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
So, this is minor site plan approval.
We, we requested a minor site plan.
So minor site plan approval would require a site plan, also you'd have to provide for a parking plan.
Yeah.
A parking plan, showing dimensioned parking spaces, handicap spots and the like.
Okay.
Um, is that gonna be provided to us or?
So, like I, oh, I just got disconnected for some reason. Like I said, I just put this together today and a little bit that I'll, I'll take blame for not having it go too soon, I just lost my clue. Um, I can provide more detailed one, this was kind of, um, I don't wanna call a quick jump at it, I just think, it, it hit me today that, hey, I should probably show.
Well, it's part of my design pool.
Sure, I did not prepare the site plan, which is where, that makes it a little bit tricky for me. Uh, if I didn't prepare the site plan, how do I provide site plan? And I kind of used the one from Berkshire Engineering, um, and like I said, overlaid it with those rectangles.
And you already have marked out for handicap most likely, right?
There is one there now, but that can, that's easy to designate and clean that up, just to make it more quiet.
I did a site plan review in two thousand and fifteen, we did spot that, and then I know it's changing now a little bit, um, but we didn't have that.
It, it's basically, it's actually right next to the front door. Um, there, there's a level spot next to the front door, it, the threshold is accurate, there's no ramps or anything, we can, I guess I would suggest we can provide more details. I don't, I submitted what I submitted and then I put this together this morning.
I guess we're, we're saying that because of the use, because there's no defined parking ratio based in the, in the code. That you could find.
Yeah.
Um, because of the use, again, retail, office, that's a different story.
Yeah.
Um, just like I'm, again, minor site plan approval, the number of parking, the number of parking spaces and the parking spaces, it's supposed to be delineated on a plan.
You're sure.
More specifically, the handicap parking with a, with a hatched areas.
Yeah.
Um, it's gonna be kind of hard to abide if you, if you got a question.
So, so I think I know where you're going, that falls under building code slash AAB, architectural access board, is the specifics of, of acceptable parking.
From the building standpoint.
Yes, correct.
But we're also talking about minor site.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, yeah. So I guess that's what I was suggesting, I could follow the guidelines of AAB, that's the architectural access board, Massachusetts version of ADA. They tell you how to do the parking, the striping, the signage, we can make sure we comply with that.
I guess what we're looking at here is, when they're done, they're probably gonna have sufficient parking for the use that they're intending for the primary building and the, and the addition of the back.
Exactly, and, and the handicap is already there, nothing is changing in the front. So it's already established, that's how I look at it too. I mean, having it redefined on this updated site plan would be good.
Hmm.
Um, pretty much you're. And with that size of building, you're gonna, you're losing your parking, but how it's shaped, you're not losing your parking, because you, you don't have enough room to double up anyway.
That's where I was trying to wrap the head around, could we really like three rows of parking in the back of the building?
I don't think you'd get that.
It'd be, it'd be tough.
If you did it now, so you're not, you're not. Yeah, you're just pushing, pushing that first row back.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right now, the way that people park is, right, it affects the village and the way it's back now, because that's part of the space a little.
Yeah.
And generally on a site plan also, I mean, it's a forty by sixty building that's gonna be attached to the back, you're showing the setback line, so you, you know, you're not encroaching upon that. Uh, but generally also on the site plan, you usually have the dimensions of the building to the setback or to the property line.
So you're, the distance from the, from the building to the property.
Should be illustrated.
So, that's one, I understand, uh, I did not prepare this plan. And I can tell you that engineers should not be dimensioning to property. Unless there's, that's kind of a totally, you can go down rabbit hole, I've learned that the other way, over in the past few months. That, uh, dimensions to property lines should only be done by a surveyor, because this surveyor can legally say without property. You might have all the evidence in the world, fences and bounds and pipes in previous plans, until a surveyor says that's right. Um, so I, I, I understand your, your.
Yeah, you mentioned, uh, special permit, was this subject to a special permit at one point?
Well, I don't wanna speak for Peter, but he, he showed me, uh, a special permit application.
Was it?
Well, I thought you said, maybe I misunderstood.
I think it was a site plan.
Then my mistake, so there was a site plan review issue, site plan approval issued in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, not a special permit.
All right, not unless.
Right.
Some people, that's a minor difference, but it's actually not.
The only, the only evidence on this is the document that Brooke sent to all of us.
Right.
I think it was a site plan review.
Right.
I heard the word special permit, I think.
Yeah, in that, it mentioned that the area was a, in the floodplain. And Matt and I discussed it before this meeting, and Matt, your position now is?
The properties in the floodplain, but not whole property, only the rear half.
Not the part of the project where there're gonna be cars or parking lots or buildings.
Your career, none of the proposed work is in the floodplain, I wonder if the original application meant to say part of the properties in the floodplain, but we're not working it.
Well, we just clarified, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Peggy, anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Oh, Conrad covered, anything for me? Dave? Peter?
Um, just, uh, parking, uh, I know you're not gonna pave it, but there are ways of indicating to people that it's not just a free for all, you know, you could put down, what do you call them, ledgers or boundaries, or will the wheels go?
You can, it's not the most efficient, but you could actually take the, what's there?
Or ropes or something, so that they get the idea that there are two.
Yeah.
Rows preferred. Uh, and, uh, if, if you could represent that he'll be doing that, I think that it should be fine from my point of view.
I, I could definitely follow up with a dimensioned parking plan with more detail.
Yeah, so could you, could you file this, send it to Brooke and it will have at least this.
Sure.
In the records, so you're presenting it tonight, we'll have it also in the record.
And then I'll follow up.
If you wanna do a different one, that's more specific, I think there's no problem from my point of view.
Sure.
I'm just on that, just to, I, I try to every spring, spray paint lines, because it's, it's, it's lead up too, where people just come in, they wanna park wherever they wanna park, so it really does help us, like walk to spring again, and it doesn't last all that long, because the material is what it is, but I try to do it every year.
Your customers come back again and again, so they, you know, the idea.
They get, they, you train them, more train.
And then as to lighting, this is an industrial zone, so I'm assuming that there's a lot of light down there and that we aren't really gonna be concerned about that, so. I bring it up only because it's one of the things we normally look at. Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Um, just one question that, I got Gordon still there, um, is there any dumpster?
Oh, the dumpster.
Bin or anything like that?
What are you currently handling?
Uh, I've done, on this, uh, dog day here, so I have two, uh, sepoles, one with cycling, one.
It's actually handles in itself, I do, yeah, I bring it up. This business is not producing a lot of.
Uh, no, it wouldn't.
You go in with your clothes and you walk out with your clothes.
Plastic wheelies, right?
Yeah.
Are they?
No.
Excellent.
Good.
Totes.
Totes.
Hey, Gordon.
Hey, how, how are you doing, Mr. Chairman? Um, a, a couple of quick things, um, uh, number one, I don't see the driveway designated back to the parking spaces. And as far as the number of parking spaces go, it's based on use, as you know. Uh, the building official is the one who designates use after the engineer architect designates it. But generally speaking, um, a workout area is considered, uh, once they get to, uh, calculation of fifty people or more as an assembly. So I don't know if that helps you in your review, if it's less than that, it's considered a business as far as square footage goes per occupant. Um, and, uh, as far as the building being in the side set, this, um, my remembrance, when this was constructed, was that the main building was actually approved to be put in a ninety degree position. And the owner or, and or builder turned that building and put it in. And, um, and the town knew that, chose to take no action, so therefore it's kind of a pre-existing non-conforming structure that gains certain rights under a recent law a couple of years ago. Um, so that might answer your parking area, it's really what the building official determines the occupancy to be in a, in a, um, in a workout area, whether it's assembly or business. Um, the, um, and I tried to explain what happened to the building, that I don't believe it ever was legitimized through variance. I believe it's just the town turned an eye to it and let it go on. Um, so is that in just the, um, I, I didn't know about the driveway, if that should be designated on your site plan, since it's a site plan. And then your approval based on the date of the plan, those, those are the only things I observed, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Gordon. So you got that? You're, you're doing that as we speak.
Yeah, the drive, it's hard, because there's a lot of line work on this plan.
Yep.
Um, there's actually a, a state drainage system, pipe, that's really good, comes across their property and dumps out to the rear of their property, that's one of these sets of double lines here. One that has an angle, anyways, the kind of scribble that I'm tracing in red, that's the driveway that's there now, it gets you to the back, when all said and done, it stays in the same spot. Um, it's interesting that, uh, Mr. Bailey spoke about the building itself, and again, I saw they found a variance, but he just said, maybe another one is never issued. Maybe that's why I can't find it. I thought I found paperwork on it, but I could never locate it again.
They allowed it to be built as a. I mean, whatever, who knows? You know Louis had to be involved too, I think he did, I think I remember it being a modular. So.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the, uh, application of Justin and Ashley Soules for site plan review of Soul Sports and Fitness at nine twenty-five Pleasant Street. Um, that the application and plan submitted in October twenty, dated October twenty twenty-five and submitted tonight. Be deemed sufficient for review and treated as a minor site plan.
Yes, you got all that, is there a second? I'll second, Dave seconds, any further discussion? Conrad?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the application of Soul Sports and Fitness for, um, minor site plan review at nine twenty-five Pleasant Street be approved, uh, with the condition that the, uh, engineer, site, the, uh, surveyor, so you're, you're an engineer. Or, did the engineer file a more specific, um, parking plan subsequently, if it is consistent with the one he showed us tonight.
And driveway entrance.
Including a driveway entrance and filed with, and filed with Brooke.
I'll second that, Peter.
Okay, motion and a second, uh, Conrad?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi. Okay.
Look here.
I'm sure, taking more concrete tomorrow.
For the record, the plan submitted was dated April, or is dated April fourteenth?
Thank you.
But I can provide a more detailed parking plan, that I'll, I'll put a different date on.
Yeah, October twenty-five, we have on this paperwork.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Now the business is done and how hard work.
Yeah. Now the fun begins.
You're digging this.
Let's push, uh, two fifty.
That was the format.
There you go.
This is the amendment of the site, how it came in, what are you charging for? How much, you know, site plan is two hundred, site plan review, is that what we're gonna?
What, so this?
Wait a minute, he has a trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
How much? Yeah.
How much do you want it for?
I was gonna say.
You, your talk is, how much do you want it for, Peg, there you go, you got it. We were having a conversation, but you go ahead.
Yeah, is that all right? With you guys?
I think because of the, the.
Two hundred.
Yeah, no, think of it.
That's a major.
Well, I'll start by filling the date out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fill the date out.
Isn't it by price?
Fill it out.
It's, it's by price of project or cost of project, right? Well, yeah. And it's to the town of Lee's, that?
Yes, yeah, town of Lee. And then you can make a note there.
Oh, maybe that was two.
I think it's five hundred.
You go.
No.
Yeah.
Those were the, for you guys.
Yeah, it's gotta be five.
Yep.
Five hundred it is. I mean, that's what it is, I, I don't even know why those others, uh, nobody, you don't get, you can't build a garage these days for fifty thousand.
No, you can't, you can't, you can't build anything to that.
I had one a few years ago, that I think can get for you folks. We're glad to read what Art's love, this is a renovated building.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
So that's zero.
Thank you, hey, good luck.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
How long is that?
I think we'll see you guys.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Building cost construction, or cost of building permit, there's no.
No, there isn't.
There's a little bit of a.
Oh, yeah, there's quite a few gray areas, but whatever.
Okay, well, we, we lost Gordon.
Yep.
Already, okay.
He'll be back.
CJ?
Oh, you waited patiently.
How are you guys doing? And.
Do you all know Andy, Andy McKeever?
Andy McKeever, community planner, PRPC, great, great.
I think about the use too, you know, Jack, they all do.
Did you get our names, Andy, you know who we are?
You got name text.
Oh, that's okay.
We got him.
So I have one more here, sorry, messed that up.
Well, I don't.
No way. Oh.
She did, I think I lost mine in the.
Well, here I got, we can share, we can share.
So we're getting closer to a. A chart, that is.
It's wandering along, yeah, Andy spent, so this, this need, as I said in the email, this needs to be, this'll get refined more and more and a little cleaner, but this was really the attempt to focus on every single use listed in the bylaw, uh, throughout the bylaw and using the verbiage from the bylaw as well, so that's where you can also see inconsistencies and how, you know, some are a specific individual use, some it's an elongated sentence describing the use. But, uh, that was our first attempt to go through, list them all. Um, the one thing that we were talking about that we would probably all, also make sense to put on this um, is listing the permit granting authority, because there are three of you that.
I think you have them all, the, under, is it special permit?
Yeah.
The, okay, I forgot, it's, I was questioning whether, you know what, that's, I was thinking of something else, so I'll, I'll retract that. Uh, but yes, the, the way that that's been set up, it's listed in the field, um. So that, that's probably the best way to do it, I was looking at another one, to another example today, I'm just a little confused at the point. So, that, uh, not, not this, but for another community, so this is really what it could look like in the end, and as we go through this, there's, you know, as I sort of wrote out in the email, there's clearly some uses that are described in different ways, um, that may have different meanings. Such as like related to multifamily dwellings, um.
Well, that, that has also changed since our last town meeting, from what you're reading in our bylaw.
Okay, so that wasn't, okay.
Yeah, we, we have changed that, so that would have to be adjusted, can, Brooke, can you get that? Has that been approved, we, we got approval on that, right?
Yeah, because not.
Yeah, because not codified in our T code yet because we just got approval.
Okay, so we can fix that. That's right.
Which wait till you see that. I can't believe it. Eight eight units in any zone.
Mm-hmm. That's what we said.
Went from five or actually anywhere. Yeah. Which was amazing to get through.
Okay, well, now that that's been finally approved, well, that'll get fixed in the table. But then there's agricultural uses. And then there's the question of, since we're going through this exercise, is there anything not listed that should be listed in the new stable? It's not in the bylaw now, but you know, going through this chart. Is there is there anything? And you don't have to totally next to that tonight. We have time of this. But those are the types of things that make sense. If we're doing this cleanup now, is there anything missing? Or should we be updating how uses are referred to? I mean, it's pretty common issue or a number of zoning bylaws over time. Uses become outdated, you know, outdated terminology is used. So there's things like that we could look at as well. But I guess not with the multifamily being fixed. You know, it's things like this agricultural use where there's some related uses. As we, as we identify those things, how do we want to work through that? Do you want a list of items that we come here and talk to you about, try to work out what the consensus feels? That's sort of where we're by these of staff that we are.
Oh, you got, because yeah, you split it into a resi egg and then business uses.
The idea today was pretty much formatting idea. Rather than have a written narrative in a bylaw, put it in a tabular format. So this most towns have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially because you have individual zoning districts listed where it's repetitive where you're just lifting.
Yeah.
This is gonna remove pages and pages of.
This will be all. So all that will appear, all our narrative. Look, she's so happy.
So much better.
Yeah. I I really appreciate the work that went into this. This is a lot of work and it really helps me to clarify some that I've had. I feel like this is like digging in ancient Sumer. You know, there's a civilization on top of a civilization on top of civilization. And it all strikes me as somewhat sketchy in terms of its thoroughness. You know, there are some uses that are only listed in one zone. What is that? I mean, are we prohibiting it? We don't. I don't think we are. I don't think anybody really thought about it. It just they were working on that zone and they threw that thing in and double take behind most. So I feel like there's a huge amount of work here that I would like to do. Simplify this and consolidate it and make sure that you know, like for instance, for instance, public administration is listed in an O P O I, the O P I district. Well, if state of Massachusetts wants to open a health office, do they have to do it only in the O P L I district? Or can they do it in a downtown district? You could argue it both ways. There's a lot of those kinds of examples.
Would would public administration just be municipal use?
I guess that's one of the, that's like one of the questions that we also, you know, there's few examples of that throughout this table where.
Apartments, lofts or other residential is listed in the industrial district. Well, our apartments are allowed in residential districts, you know.
Yeah, apartments is multifamily anyway.
Yeah, so it was like people use, people amended this thing over the course of fifty years with different concepts of what the uses, what the boundaries are between uses. And I don't know, can you guys give us more standardized? Use definitely use these things that you could suggest, you know, what we what we might do with apartments, lots or other residential in the in the I zones. Is there a way that we can sort of fold that into other things? So that seems like that's a big job to make through this whole list.
Well, I, I mean, okay.
Reduce the number of lines.
Wouldn't using a chart like this, wouldn't that be eliminated? And it would be a special permit for all the residential stuff?
Yeah. So if you want to build an apartment, if you want to put in a loft and a and a garage, let's say, in the industrial district, we know that based on this, that that requires a special permit from the planning board. What if you want to do that very same thing in a residential district? What is it? What do you, what do you need? Is it?
It's allowed. It's by right.
Well, it's by right, but okay, maybe it's maybe it's justified that apartments, lots and other residential uses are so different in the industrial area.
No, I think they.
Not even mentioned anywhere else, but they're listed specifically in the industrial area. But I don't think that's why it's here.
I think when you're done here, every one of these squares is gonna have a digit in front of it. It's gonna have a a you know, by right, permitted or not. Or by special permit. Or special permit planning, special permit Z B A, special permit select board.
Yeah.
I mean, each one of these squares is gonna have some emblem of.
Is that the way the other towns do it generally? Yeah, this cell has an entry.
Yeah, usually it's.
So so that I think raises an important question for the board about how many bites we want to take at this because I mean, one option would be to just ask this off to the town and say, this is what we want to replace all that text with. And now we're not going to make any substantive changes. We're just codifying it all in one table and we'll come back here next year and make simplifications and it's gonna be a big job and it's gonna take us a long time to do it. And you know, we're just starting on a multi-year process and this is the first step. That's one way to look.
Yeah, but are we saying that what's in the code today, this is just reformatting what's what's already been approved?
Codifying. It's not super way. What's already the law and.
It's not like we're changing anything.
Yeah.
We're just.
We don't think anyway. Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's all we got to clarify when we're done.
So it's so that's a question I think for the board is you want to start toggling this already, or do you want to just make sure this is right? And there's a good codification. Send it to the town and substitute for the large text that we already have. And then work from this from then on to simplify it in there and start filling in the hole.
Then that we do all at the same time. Let's let's work on it.
You have six months to figure it out.
Yeah, we can go right through each. I mean, the highlighted ones that are questioned right now. You know, industrial zone that has a special permit to it for residential. They use some odd wording in there, putting loft. Loft is a
A unit.
A unit. It doesn't, it shouldn't have been there. It shouldn't. It was just whoever wrote that. Who knows what they were thinking, but that could that could go. So it would be special permit for a one, two. And actually, our multi is gonna get yeah, I mean, the multi three to four and five plus are is kind of gone now.
Right.
It's gonna be just any multi up to eight. It's gonna be a special permit by the Board of Selectmen. And so the only difference for industrial zone, we'd have a special permit by the planning board. For that one. And then in our we also, and you'll you'll see in our latest round of zoning. P C V C, we, I believe we allowed them to do housing. So that would be, that's under special permit, right, Brooke? I remember, right?
Yes.
True.
Did we, did we steal it from?
P C zone, P C V C zone, maximum numbers growing with per lot and per acre, maybe Sabbath as special permit granting.
For for those. I think that's Board of Selectmen. Yeah. We've been trying to steal as much back from the Board of Selectmen as we can. Because it's it's get things back to planning. Or I think for many years, you look at the towns and the select board wanted control over like big town issues, which is fine, but like standard planning stuff should be at this level.
My memory of it is that there are quite a few zoning board of appeals special permits in the oldest part of our bylaw. But I don't see that in the table, Andy. Did you find that?
Yes, I see.
The Z B A?
There's a few.
I know there was some. I didn't find like an
It's in the it's in the very long section of Article four that has all the different zones. It's like a subset can be in a C and a D and devoted to different boards, special permit.
You put in in what I provided in what they provided for us is golf club, nonprofit, private, club, hospital, sanitarium and convalescent.
Boat, boat river, was it? Boat registry and.
C P phase.
Yes, I've seen at least five or six on.
Oh, and.
Do you want, do you want to, so do you want to convert all the, I mean, do you want to try to push all those over?
Well, that's the next question. And I think, as I remember, there were a lot of them. Because I did, I did this work not as thoroughly as Andy did it, but I did this work seven years ago and there was quite a few where I thought, well, it's A guy has been used and it's a special permit here. And if it's a B type of use, special permit there. So they did a very simple, and I couldn't find any rationale for except a sort, you know, who was on the boards when it, when these things passed, probably it was decent. But it I don't see it in the table and I want to make sure that it's correct in the table.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely double check through it through here. I know a lot of the business uses. When you get to that section, there's a lot of zoning board of deals uses on on in that section. So when we go through. Yeah. So as we go through, I mean, they're they're definitely they're definitely in here on the table and the number of areas where the Z B A has special permit granting authority.
Can you just show me one? I see. I have seen one now. Page five.
Yeah. So if you're on, you go right to the business uses, you'll see like private, nonprofit, private club, hospital. So. Okay. A lot of Z B A there. We pull that back to the planning board?
I would like to, I would like to have a joint meeting. See if they really want this. I know, I don't know what they're doing now. Brooke could tell us, but in the past, for years, they had trouble getting corals. And I don't know if they have active members who really care. If I don't want to start a firestorm, you know, you see is grabbing jurisdiction, but we meet regularly, we're elected. Which our job to, you know, all receive planning and zoning in the town. And I think it makes sense to special permits would be wide here unless the select have one. But I don't want to take anything away from the zoning board that they have been taken. I know that their their role usually is to deal with earthquakes.
So maybe, I don't know how we can communicate with them. Brooke, you have.
Yeah, I mean, I have all their contact information. I'm also their they do have recently we added two members, so they do have a full board. Um, we won that one. You know, they need, I've seen it, they're not pretty meeting. Well, I could reach out. I don't know when.
Why don't you send them a just an example of this chart that we're working with? And tell them that we're we're reworking section four, chapter four. And send them the this chart. And I guess let them know there's special permits and they're the granting authority. And we are considering changing it to planning board instead of board of appeals. They would like comment on it.
So they issued blood plane special permits?
They do. That's like I've only had a handful of meetings with them. It's almost been for blood planes.
And why is that? Why wouldn't Concom?
Exactly. I would think Concom would do.
Tell me.
Well, it's a, it is a special permit. So usually a lot of cases of planning board. You have like dimensional special permits are often like in various, we're often Z B A work.
Yeah.
And then like more use-based focused and other factors, maybe like.
Maybe we're in here.
Also a lot of problems we've been having with conclusions of
Yeah.
which is only where we need to be before.
Could you check the state law on blood planes? I I suspect that I don't know. I don't know what happened in Massachusetts, but I was involved in land use planning in Vermont for the years when blood plane stuff was coming in and there were some experts from the state agency that went around with the sort of a prototype. You know, and handed out bylaws and said, here's how you're gonna do it. And people pretty much did it the way they wanted. I don't know if there was any foresight in it really at all, but.
I mean, basically the three bodies. Either, well, select board slash city council, zoning board, planning board. I mean, they're the only ones that issue stuff. Massachusetts. A lot of time it's often who is the strong target. And use adaptive. So about time the zoning board.
I look at Len, Lennox C B A does everything.
And that's true, like some, that's how they do it. All special permits. Go to the zoning board.
Stockbridge Select Board does everything, so.
Every place is different.
It it would really solve a lot of issues if if we
look it back.
If we had flood plain.
It would turn itself by life for applicants.
Oh, yeah.
But they have to get two special permits. Yeah, two different boards. Just because they're part of the toe of the lot happens to be below the hundred year flood plain.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's but it's the same thing in other community. I mean, I'm sure there are some like shining stars out there that figured this out, but just about everywhere you are. You could see a little battle on for years trying to shift everything over to their planning board. Because it was just so inconsistent with who oversaw what.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I think the consensus in this building is that we get planning to the planning board, anything big, community, town issue goes to the select board. You know, that's why you see the multifamily, stuff like that.
Actually, that isn't even true anymore. We we've got jurisdiction over a lot of multifamily now.
Just did it on.
Right.
On Summer Street.
Yeah. And and put Z B A as what it is, an appeals board.
Yeah, I think the original concept of those boards were an appeals board. They would appeal, hear appeals from determinations by zoning administrators, appeals from determinations by planning boards. And they would do variances which are kind of inequitable, kind of outside the normal rules of the law. Believe, just like a court of equity in the old days. Yeah. But custom is custom, you know, you you can't be sure how people will react. But I don't know if they want to have a joint meeting. I would welcome that.
If if they want to come to one of our meetings, have their representative, let's do that. Yep.
Which meaning do you want me to? So, fast stepping ahead, November tenth and the twenty-fourth are our regular scheduled meeting times for next month. The tenth is a day for Veterans Day, so it comes close on that Tuesday. But then the twenty-fourth is the week of Thanksgiving. So I don't know.
It's only Monday.
Gets me away from my house, guys. I'll come to that meeting.
We we, hey, we got another Thursday night this week. Are you, are you doing that too? You're not doing that one? This is my only meeting this week. Okay.
So I can, I can invite him to one of those meetings. I don't know which.
Let's go ahead and do the tenth. Yep. Get their input.
Invite the board?
If they want to come.
Yes, we could do that and and post it. And you're gonna have to post it like that.
Or they could just come and talk at the public comment, you know, as as individual members.
I don't.
No, I don't think.
No, because they're they're gonna be discussing any that affects them. So. Yeah, I'd like, did we come up with a name for our A R O D overlay? We did. Can we?
Who's your favorite baseball player? So. So.
Um, so it's, we have adaptive reuse overlay district. Short for A-Rod.
Right.
And it just, it doesn't, so then we started. Um, Brooke brought up a, a mill reuse. O- overlay district and we're looking at it's like, jeez. They already kind of have it in, in A-Rod, but. Nobody really thinks of it, go to it, I mean.
About a redevelopment district.
Or something like that.
Hmm, that sounds.
That's easy enough.
Yeah.
Reded my redevelopment overlay.
Uh, it, it's not just what you call it, I think it's also. I'll direct PDS to actually make them aware of it, what it means. I think that's the tricky thing for my district.
It wouldn't even, I mean, I, I'm tempted to say commercial, but I don't even think it'd be fully commercial, because we've had it.
But the idea is something's already there.
Yes.
No longer active and we want to. Get, get land reused. So I think that's the key idea.
Reconstruction redevelopment district.
Redevelopment works. The, the name doesn't even bother me that much. I mean, I mean, I know, call it what you want, I think it's. How do you direct?
Make sure we sell it.
Make sure that they're aware that that's not. Especially with whatever adjustments you make to it, I mean, it's going to be. You know, it's own point along the property.
It, and that's, that could change all the mills. Now, that would fall in that. Okay. Redevelopment? Is that where we're at?
That's what I've got now.
Is it redevelopment overlay or it's just, it's a category? Overlay would imply, well, it is an overlay.
It is an overlay, so I think that should be with it. Just the law.
Anything that would.
Yes.
Would redevelopment district be more resistant to acronym, acronymization than? Redevelopment overlay.
Overlay. I don't know.
Well, well.
See, we'll think, we can. Change it.
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
So the use table, before we go, before we go back to that.
Yep.
What, so I, I mean, I think I'm starting to get a better handle of how we'd like to approach it and I. To Peter's point, I think there's the other issue of. Clean up of some of the terminology, but also defining what some of it means, because I think in some cases it's clear, you know. It's clear what a use is, you read it, you understand what that means, but then there's some cases in here where it's not. Where you need definition. So are we also looking for some definitions to? Air with.
Problem, yes, I think would be part, would be.
We have definitions, you know.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't, but there's a lot of this stuff that I'm sure is.
But a lot of it's no.
Yeah, but, cause I think that's the whole thing of the table, is the table to refer back.
Yeah, I mean, every example on the first page, we have assisted living, senior, senior housing, nursing home and elder care facility right off line. All, I mean, to me, all, all the similar things, so why do we need so many? Is there a difference in definitions, is there a difference in how? You know, there's like that also. As I had people that have asked me and like, well, what's the difference between so and so and so and your first? So, can be.
There is a difference between assisted living, senior and nursing home, three different things.
They are.
Three different categories. Well, and, and senior housing though is also one where. You could question whether that needs to exist on its own, what has been done already, I, I think we'd need to.
Exactly, that's, yes.
So that's one that could be a candidate. Foundation to.
Yeah.
Consolidate and expand on the. Uh, housing depth or use definitions.
I'm really glad we're going after this, because I think it needs to be simplified and very hard to implement the way it is. It's going to be very hard to explain when we get before town meeting unless we take really good notes as we go.
Yeah.
So if we, for example, just to use your current example, if we abandoned the idea of having senior housing as a category. We should have notes when we go to town meeting that say. We decided on, you know, November fifteenth that. Senior housing was no longer needed and it's being folded into something else. Cause I'm not going to remember it in a year and a half.
No, only if they ask.
What?
Only if they ask.
I know, I know, but you will, there are people in town who will ask. Things they could ask and you don't know which one they're doing.
We, we're gonna have good minutes, you know, that, that we use as a record team before we go to town meeting, we can.
Yeah.
Make some bullet points and Cole and I will be there to this.
Okay. We use an example, if you, if you don't have senior housing in there, people are saying. We're not allowing senior housing.
Right.
Well, senior housing is, is.
Housing.
Maybe we should have like a, a nerd paper, you know, paper for nerds.
Played with the dummies, you know?
No, no, not, not for, not for the town meeting, but for people, I'm not, I got people in mind, but I'm not going to say names. Who really dig into this stuff and come up with the questions, if we could. You know, prepare a summary of what our actions were to change the status quo and the reason. And what the intended effect is, I think that would be. Helpful to distribute before the vote. Um, cool.
Well, I think that's, so the, I would say the first run through is just.
Yeah.
We're gonna see, what is really just consolidating? And leave it at that, and then if there's some things that turn into subs, because I don't view that necessarily as a. Something that you like, removing senior housing, if the other housing categories are still allowing some housing, I don't view that as subject. But if, there's some, so if we're not changing. You know, what, if it's by rights, site plan review, special permit. And we're not changing um any of like the requirements or conditions that come along with that. Then it's really just about. Making this easier to read and. So I think that's, if, if there are some things that fall outside that, then we really need to walk the track to that too. But right now, it seems like the community will be focused on just removing. Removing things in here that aren't needed.
I just don't want to lose track of what we've done or.
Yeah, why? So I think what, and maybe what we do is from this version that you've seen. We're going to do a redline version and we'll start there, see if we can, if that's an incident to pocket. But we'll redline everything, we'll make notes of where we made changes. So we can keep that, we can keep a version like that, while the clean version, but then we'll have.
That would help, yeah, that.
That would help.
We get. Back.
CJ, you see this as a six month project or an eighteen month project?
This could be longer, I, you know, we're talking about this completely down, um, and we could get, uh. If this needs to go, if this needs to continue on, which it probably does. Beyond June. Because I think what, what's likely going to happen here is that there's, if phase one, if we can really just keep it clean up. But you're going to see things in here where you're like. You should fix other items that might be used more substance, but you might need to do more public out there challenge to get by. So maybe that's for the home divided or keep a running list of other items that might need to be fixed. Days two, and if we have the funding available by the end of this. I'll just continue it on. Not.
It's state funding most mostly?
Yeah, it's state funding and it's some of BRPC's fund, like BRPC's funding is what's used as in that. Though, which was a, I think it was a twenty percent match, so what, one way we can get creative is. If um we're spending down the state funding, don't allow the grant, we can carry over the BRPC style of it. Beyond here, so there's some ways we can deal with that, but I, I think there's a reality that this is going to continue on.
So I, we meet in, when do we meet, May?
Yep.
So we should have. Uh, really by the end of March. Our proposal ready. Which is only four months away.
I, and I would, probably what would make sense is we have a cleaned up use table. Um, we find some very. Uh, benign definitions. That fit the uses that need definitions, that's probably a good focus. And then we figure out what adjustments need to be made to be, I think that, however you adjust the A-Rod between the name and threshold. That's, that's a separate warrant item.
Uh, one thing that I think we also need to start with now before town meeting is battery energy stores. We don't have any of that in the state, it's really.
I'm sorry, I didn't carry you.
Battery storage systems.
Oh.
That's something that we have nothing in and we do have solar. They also did update solar, um, but before we have to by December three first, five, five, six, have. A system of how to handle if, if something like that were to come into play. Maybe because I'm gonna get it, it's pretty basic, that covers it and if we decide we want. On further, we can continue that. But that is kind of.
What sort of use would that be classified in?
Industrial.
Yeah.
There's a rant about these things, that's. That's kind of a serious matter.
Don't mean to derail Stuart, that a conversation.
That and solar protective though, so you just have to make sure that you're. Allowing both. In a good portion of the town.
I mean, I'm, I'm not real nervous about that.
Battery.
About battery, because.
Batteries viewed as protected under.
It's contained, it's smaller contained, does sprawl, it's more concentrated, so it wouldn't take up as much land. And it's gonna, it would have to be. Closer to any, um.
What it uses, yeah.
The uses, yeah. So any, any um transfer stations?
Yeah.
I mean, the only one up by Woodspine, that's, and they had them up there.
So that's the only thing that I think our files are missing right now that.
We have solar.
We have solar.
Is that in compliance with all the newer requirements?
They, the state just released an update in solar by law and ours does not. Gone here with a fine tooth comb, but ours is a little outdated, but nothing.
There, there also been expected you develop. Consolidated permitting process. With it by the end of next December. That's the tricky, I would think that's the. With all renewable energy.
It's the twelve month.
Can you send us the statute of this?
Yeah, I can send you, I thought I forwarded it a few weeks ago, I can send it to you again, I think it's long.
We've written. A few comment later, BRPC, we've written a few comment later.
Did finally the decision of the state agency or finally the decision of the town?
Uh. Well, the, so the state has decided. That. Anything above twenty-five megawatt for solar. Is it perhaps a hundred or a hundred fifty megawatts? Those will be exempt from local regulations. And the state will permit all of those projects. Which for solar. I mean, you think most of our solar projects in the region are probably three to five megawatts. That's a big project. Battery though, that's what you're seeing, if you saw the headline in the Eagle about this recently. It, it, where it has to be accessed via Pittsfield. Um, I want to say that's one that is likely going to get. Pulled into the state level process, so it may end up being totally exempt from local review. Everything under those thresholds, you'll still be able to regulate, but you have to develop the consolidated permitting process where.
Every department, every board.
When you say consolidated, does that mean one board only or?
So it's not like a forty B where like the ZVA, like you'll just say the planning board is the one that always. You'll have final say, but it's still subject to whatever conservation permitting is required or anything else in the town, so. Um, that's one of those big question marks because since they're protected uses. You know. If a, if a community is trying to negotiate this process, it, it almost would have been better if they said. There is one permitting authority that has an overarching approval for the town, just like the forty B. Because then, um, if there is a body who's in disagreement with the project, they don't derail the whole thing where. It was just one decision maker, you could then negotiate out what the project is and. Maybe have it, you know, you, you wouldn't want one of your bodies to derail the project. Because if. They make a decision that. Uh, rejects the, you know, essentially rejects the project. It can just get bumped up anyway, you need to improve it, so you want to keep. Everything local as much as. Well, I, uh, those regulations aren't final yet, but that's part of our. But you could cite these things anywhere? So that's a big question mark, what's a reasonable regulation? So solar. That where. Since the state regulations don't really address renewable energy, it's what's been determined by case law. And case law hasn't really established what is protected and what's not. Solar, battery, energy, uh, battery, battery storage systems, they are protected. But no one knows to what degree, because the case law has just picked that little pieces of it, so like for example. It has still never been determined. What percentage of, so you could develop an overlay district that, you know, this is where solar is allowed, this is where battery storage is allowed. But it's never been determined, well, what's the threshold for what's reasonable and what's not as far as. Percentage of the town, so we know in the case law, I think one or two percent of the town is viewed as unreasonable. That was overturned um in courts. But if you allow these projects, ten percent, twenty percent of it. Is that unreasonable? Still hasn't been determined yet. So that is one of the real frustrations when it comes to solar, when it comes to these battery storage systems is that. Yes, they're protected, but you, it really hasn't been determined to what degree, because it's all based on. Case law versus actually legislated. Is there any towns in Massachusetts that have approved these things already? Batteries? Battery storage. Yes, uh. I, I went, sorry, I'm laughing because it, the project that comes to mind is. Um, this one that was, is in Eastern Mass, I'm blanking on which town. And, um. So they eventually got approved, the town eventually approved the project, it's under construction, I think it's about to come online. And they showed these photos of the project. And it was like, oh, okay, well, they forced some sort of retaining walls to be built, like this project. No, they actually built. Twenty-five foot cinder block walls around the entirety of the project. Uh, and I could, at first you didn't realize how big it was, until then they showed the perspective from inside the development. Were the storage containers with all the batteries in them, and then you have this giant wall behind it, so.
Twenty-five feet high?
Twenty-five feet, wow.
So which, which looked worse, the building or the wall? So at that point, right?
I think the wall looked horrible and I'm not sure exactly what it was protecting, so, um. No, no, anyway, that was, I think that was considered a success story because it was developed, but the, the thing is, it's the.
Shed and carver?
The check in, uh. I know how to look it up, uh.
It's not.
No, I don't think it's possible, I could tell you where, I'll, I'll find out where it is, I'll send you a link, because I. Uh, we just went to a conference that, um. Marpa, so like the Mass Regional Planning Association and DLS put on, and that was one of the case studies. Uh, that was shown how a community could do it, but the, the community is like the. One, they're kind of forced to do it, but there's the dollar, the dollar, and that's why I think it came out in the article with Lanesboro, with the amount of money that happens to receive every year. Sort of like. Part of the incentive to push communities to figure out. There will be a large local payment. Is there a lot of the location of these things, where they're cited? Adjacent to residential areas? Can you just put industrial areas, you know, what protections? Sounds like we have no way of protecting. Have to do, I think if you were to, if you wanted to, um. What I would suggest is if you start going through this and you're trying, either through an overlay or just trying to regulate specific districts. We'd want to do an analysis, if you only do your industrial district, what percentage of the land base in town is industrial district? One percent, that's probably not enough and you'll need to find other areas. So, but thi- this is new to us too, we're trying to, trying to learn what we're even. I'll be even get guy. Yeah.
No way.
So.
Our industrial zone definitely wouldn't be enough.
But that's, that's something that the state wants to settle out by the end of next year, because they want projects moving forward. Really? So are they stopping these kinds of projects until this gets resolved? Or is this tough as I? No, like the, the one in Lanesboro, I think it's unclear to me, because if these regulations are in place and final. Where they'll be ready to accept applications until next December, it's not clear if. Like this prod, this local project, if they're going to actually wait that out, or if they're going to start a local process now and try to get approval sooner. If a developer came to this town right now. They got a piece of crappy option somewhere. There's nothing we can do about it, our, our code doesn't allow for it, our, our code doesn't address it. Yeah, and I think that's. That's where I would, you, you would want to meet a guy right away, like, you know, you want a land business attorney. Whether it's town councils, is that, you know, land business. Um, you would want to look up any. So, we're exposed.
On, but, on the battery systems, we have, we have a.
We have the soul, yeah, I'm concerned about the battery. You, you potentially are, I mean, in the near term. You know, you, I think you would say it's not allowable use, because if it's not in your use table, yeah, that's, that's how you would address it.
Good.
Well.
And they, they're ma- and going through a process like that, I mean, this is just sort of my end, but going through a process like that. A developer like that would be better off just waiting till the state's going to force these regulations to take effect anyway. Versus going through a lengthy lawsuit. That's just maybe not too.
What is the, what is the downside of a battery? Storage area, is it dangerous? Is it aluminum, it might explode or?
Yeah, I think that's, I think the, so. That's the scary thing is what happens in a fire.
I've heard of how they usually build for that.
And that's, so the, the model, uh, that the state released, the draft model that the state released. Which is based on. Part of what New York did. When. One of these projects moves forward, I mean, that's. You, you know, you have to. For whatever protections it have, project that got has. Going through the permitting process. You can still require, you know, that, they're still going to be required to have like. Essentially what happens in an emergency situation. Ensuring that your local public safety officials have the adequate resources they need to deal with something, those are all like the basic requirements with any battery. So that's something that. Even if, you know, in, in the end, there's a situation where you need to approve a project like that, those are all. Uh, going to be viewed as reasonable conditions to make sure that all that's in place, not be expensive to develop.
So either right now, if someone came to this town. And wanted to propose something like that. Our position is. It's not a listed use in our code. Hence it's prohibited. That's our, that would be our position at this stage.
I, yeah, that's not my legal advice, but that's, I think that's how you view it, I mean, it's just like any other use that's not listed in your, in your zoning by law. At the same time, I mean, if you're, if you're working towards developing a bylaw, which you should. Um. To me, I mean, that's. But that's the town making reasonable steps to try to accommodate these projects that are protected use, so if you are taking steps to start dealing with that. You know, in my experience, that's, I mean, that's a, that you're not stonewalling a project, like, I mean, you're aware that you're going to have to deal, potentially deal with a project like. The state is going to force it because they are going to be very aggressive. And that's sort of our commentary from the BRPC side is that. We have relatively cheap land in the Berkshires compared to the rest of the state. And we have much more open land and larger tracts of land that can be acquired. And while there is a lot of protected land, you know, that puts us, that, one that puts us at risk for an orderment amount of this type of development. And, you know, removal of a lot of forested land and other land with sensitive natural features that. You know, we really wouldn't want to see clear cut for, you know, it's, it's the same issue with solar too. It's. There's plenty of solar development here, and there's plenty of support for that, but we just don't want to see. The Berkshires have to take an unreasonable amount of that.
It's Phil William Street, they stopped it?
Last I heard, no, um. And they have a zoning free, but. We haven't been involved in that, and more probably us just because we live in Pittsfield, but, um. There, there's a zoning freeze on it. So I don't, as far as I've heard, that project is not dead. But I don't, I know that.
Was tall, huh?
It's, I know that the Conservation Commission has pushed back. Residents are clearly pushing back. So I, I don't know where that's going to go.
Probably waiting to see what the state does.
And that, that could happen too, I mean, there, I think the question is, so with the city, the city has an overlay district to develop. For battery storage systems, but the city doesn't have to get an approval. From Attorney General for any of their zoning. So the city can approve zoning that. Uh, may not pass muster. Any city can't, because you, once the city council makes their decision on zoning, that's what's on the books until it's challenged in court. So where the towns, you essentially get your zoning vetted by what would hold up in the courts. The cities don't, so that's why they're also in a difficult, difficult situation.
Hey. I mean, it could, it could probably mirror our. Solar by law as far as size. And everything. With, with the restrictions on that. Because you don't want to just say. Certain, because you have different levels of battery storage. Yeah. You know. Home, actually home, you have small, you're going to have small commercial. And a large commercial.
Home battery storage isn't even subject to zoning, is it? We think not.
Depending how we wrote it. If, if we said all battery storage facilities are under special permit, then we would.
I don't know if you can do that, though, I think that, the, I, I want to say that the regulations, because I've read about this. They essentially exempt these systems.
Okay, good.
They won't store it in too for the solar collective.
And that would be solar too.
Yeah.
So.
But you're gonna have, you're gonna have small storage. Like a, there's a lot of, um. Charging facilities are now, if they, if they have a place where they don't. Have adequate infrastructure, they'll put in a battery system. So that would be. Classified in there. You know? And that's the other thing we don't. All EV charging is kind of a non u- uh, use that nobody knows about.
Hmm.
Yeah.
We consider like the drop regulations that's supposed out.
That'd be great.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Including the, um. Model bylaws for battery storage systems.
Did you read, you've read through our solar, right?
I, I haven't.
Does it compare?
It, it's not. There's a lot, I mean, it's, it's. But the stadium is kind of. Revamped. And so I think there's some language that we could maybe change to make it congruent with the state, but. I'll go through it more tomorrow in the call, we just make sure that there's nothing that there's going to be.
The, the, they want to allow a lot of the stuff by right, I think that's the, that's sort of the question mark, it's like the model by law, read it, it's based on. Being very criminal. Clear though is, is that meant to be like, you know. The rule that you're supposed to follow, or the rule that the state wants you to follow to be more promiscuous? No, for that. There's a lot right now.
I, well, I remember even when we wrote ours, we were very, um. Conscious of. Is it too restricted? Is it, you can't be restricted, so everything, remember, whenever we wrote, when we were writing each section. It's like, okay.
We did it by size.
We did by size, everything was by size.
Little ones, you know, house ones are.
Some of them, which is what not be allowed.
And then really big ones require a lot of special permit review, and maybe there was one or two in between sizes.
Which is what the state is doing.
Yeah.
And some, you get to your large industrial, it's kind of by right, or just with the site name review. Special permits always for. Industrial, industrial. Solar. So. And some of them. That are there.
You think?
So I think we're making good progress.
Karen knows how she's so.
I can't hear you pick.
No, I was saying some of, a few. Would maybe not be allowed today.
But you what?
Solar, solar.
Where's, where's Patty live?
Here at your street, but the back is all solar. There's, it's a big.
It's a freestanding unit, freestanding.
Yeah, but she said she do not.
Like you, probably not the size of script, what you would have on your. In your roof. She's got, is a freestanding unit on a station.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we, we allowed. I think most of that.
Yeah, but she said, I don't know, that one, Matt, so I don't know. I don't have any, I don't know.
Like a good progress, so we're going to meet with the zoning board of the fields.
Yep.
Or at least invite them to meet with us. We're going to aim for a. Um, town meeting. Amendment that includes the table in some form. Sort of similar to this, but updated with our last version. And simplify a little bit. And a little, and maybe have a list of things that we're going to work on next year. And, um. We're going to have definitions that you're going to suggest for us.
Uses, any. Different, yeah, the terminology of uses and. New uses.
Yeah. So I think that's good progress, I think that's workable, we can get that done, I think by the end of March.
And, and we can do some homework on that too. You know, don't put it all on these guys.
Yeah, especially if there's things that you know are an issue when it comes to definitions, like things that really need to be defined in the bylaw that. You've had problems with in the past, and really, I mean, anything else that's unclear, that, that was sort of one of the. The things, it was sort of like in the miscellaneous number three, it's just. Anything else like that that just could use. Maybe some tweaks or cleanup or just. Is yeah, unclear, but I think that would fit well into.
We'll probably think of things as we go along.
Right, we ran across them, there's, there's some language in there that was just. Stop any big box stores, our industrial, remember that, we ran across that. You know, and, and a lot, like you see that, these have been thirty years of layers. That we're peeling away fifty.
Uh, you know, maybe we can repeal that antenna bylaw that goes on and on and fifty.
Oh, my God.
Is that for, is that for cell towers?
It was.
The cell power started coming in. They created this gigantic.
Regulation.
Since, like, nothing ever has, nothing ever has been this important before.
That's, but that I think is pretty, uh, so we worked. In Pittsfield, we worked with a consultant. To help us. It have something fit in the zoning ordinance that was, um. Actually consistent with federal laws. And, um, in the end. So the consultant originally proposed, he said, well, here's a, here's the fifty page insert to deal with cell towers. Small scale cell.
He wasn't saying so, and we said, no, no.
How about twenty pages? That's what we got, twenty pages, uh, but it was still way too big, but that's. I think it's because you have to really spell out all the different scenarios, if. If this happens and this happens, then you can request, you know, and I think that was built into that because that's how the federal laws are written. Oh, that's not, uh, so that one, I'm not sure you want to touch, for your sake. We could, maybe we could get there. What I. Is there anything I, before, was it related to the table though, that you'd like to hear or that? Would be good to get addressed tonight?
Uh, uh, the next.
No, I don't think so, I think what it sounds like is, uh, if we go through, I did have some work to tie up to make sure everything's cross-referenced here, um, and you have the right references. On that, I think we can continue going through and flagging some of these things where you have, uh, either. Duplicate, um, sort of. Ways to define the same thing, or places where you have, um, you know, some inconsistency. Think we can continue to flag those and then we'll be able to bring back and like, these are some specific ones. I do want to say, also keep in mind some of the intent of some of these things, uh, we weren't. I wasn't here for when they were passed, so there was definitely a few where I saw it, I was like, I'm not quite, I'm not sure what the intent of this. Separating, you know, you know, certain buildings, agricultural uses, so, um, so those are questions that we can, I can bring back to the.
Guys, story into.
Well, I know, but I'm, I'm looking at one here that, that is just crazy.
Which, which one?
It's in RA. Um, section three, special permit by. ZBA. And it says, any accessory use. Who will by right use, whether or not on the same parcel. Is it necessary, which is necessary in connection with scientific research and development related production?
Yeah.
Provided that the Board of Appeals finds that the proposed accessory use. Does not substanti- substantially. Um. I don't know. They, I mean, dude, I don't think this is the right word in there, derogate.
Derogate? Derogate, yeah.
Derogate, is that correct? Okay, that is from public good. I have no idea what they were going for there.
Anybody talk.
We haven't even focused on that one yet because that's like the accessory tables, it's.
Yeah, oh, six oh three, that is, that is something we would.
The only thing I can think of is they had. A mill for a pro- project and they wanted to put something on another piece of land. Is why they wrote this in.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
Why you do that?
No.
Stuff like.
Because if it's, because if it's an accessory use. It, it has to be accessory to something that's on that property.
Now, here it says by.
Again, no, I understand, I understand.
The, you know, the only thing we sort of had, and, and this wasn't. This was way before that, but we had, when we did the, um, smart growth. They were hoping it was parking and. A lot that was too down, too down there.
It doesn't make sense, I mean, it's in your downtown area, it's, uh, that's the.
But this one's weird, I don't know.
It's like they got cows on one place, maybe the.
They want to have.
Testing, the testing of the milk over on the next parcel.
Yeah.
And accessory use.
But that being said, accessory use table is probably something we'll have to build after this, so this is just, I'm, this is what you have here for a draft, so second. Round, so once we kind of clean this one up, we'll want to go through a second round with the accessories and look for the same type of. Inconsistencies and sort of areas where things can be tightened.
Yeah, and be sure to get that, our new set of bylaws. For multi dwell, like that, that really cleans things up, we did away with. We did away with the two tables. The, uh, density tables and everything's one now, so. That'll be helpful.
One good thing. For the pages, it makes sense, for the pages are.
Okay.
So, um, the one thing though, you don't have to decide tonight, I wanted to flag this too because it's the important part of. How this discussion all started or related to whatever you're going to call the A-Rod. What, um. It's the threshold, I mean, I think that's sort of where we left it last time, it's like, what, what did the thresholds get reduced to? To encompass what, um. Any sort of underutilized.
Recently, we just dropped it way down to what, seven thousand or eight thousand?
Yeah, I used, I think seven, I.
Yeah.
Square footage, but I don't know if that really is the right. Definition.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Hmm, we really put it down.
You back cutting.
Hmm.
And the, the concept is, here's an industrial use. At a building that is no longer economically useful. In its present shape. And. It's gotta be bigger than a house, I agree, but. I don't think it even has to be anywhere near five thousand square feet to be. Be relevant, I mean, it, it's more the, the lot size, isn't it, that's relevant? If you want to be allowing housing.
You know, we're, we're reusing. It's a reuse overlay. So there has to be some structure.
We have this specific. Mill that we have in mind, and those are big lots with large buildings, so, but I just don't know that that's all that we would ever want to use this district. Somebody had, you know, if one of the. Factories down on the riverside. Was abandoned. Would we really want to make sure that it would, we could only redevelop it? That was five thousand square feet or more? I, I just, I think that may be a little too restrictive.
You, you know, one that does come to mind is the, uh. Gas station on Houston Sonic Street that Hannah is using for parking right now.
Windsor Garage.
Yeah. Yep. It.
How big is that to your thing?
Maybe a thousand? Eighteen hundred?
Maybe eighteen hundred, too big a garage.
Yeah.
That's in a residential district.
No, it's big, 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 or else.
So that somebody could put up a, uh, McDonald's there or a store or something, or a bank, right? No?
No.
Not, not in that. Whatever use tables would, would be by right.
Yeah.
But you got. Still by special permit, no, no, it's, it's by right.
It would be by right, so that might not even be a good example, that would work.
It's got the plane issues. Anyway, maybe we should talk about even further reducing to five thousand, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Did, did you adjust the, the age threshold too, or? Longevity of use?
I think we did.
We did, you just cut it five.
They were not.
Ten years now?
Yeah. Less than ten.
I guess the mills are the big thing, they can make it a face over there about. Not wanting to reduce.
Well, I don't want to reduce it, that's my opinion, but if I get outvoted, that's okay too.
Oh, I'm.
It's still the mills just like that.
Yeah.
Well, well, I think that's. So I think that was my follow-on comment is. I think you probably have an idea like in your head of like where, you know, purposes you just made adjustments, but. Why don't we try to pick, like, come up with some ideas for some properties for this. Zoning would actually help. And make sure that those properties, it would actually work.
Let's make sure that, as Brooke just said, let's make sure the price chopper lot is. Let's make sure that, as Brooke just said, let's make sure the price shopper lot is.
That's gotta be ten at least this month, price shopper.
Eleven thousand, eleven, eleven thousand, twelve thousand feet.
Okay.
A lot, no, the building.
The building.
The building is a weird lot, and the building.
Oh, it is, uh, it's less than two acres.
Yeah, it gets, it gets complex, because part of the building is on the post office slot where the building is on.
Yeah.
But the structure itself is, is. So that would fall.
Yes, we don't have to make too much of a change.
Is there a limit of how much new construction can accompany the redevelopment? Okay, so that's amended where you can make that determination.
Yeah, and actually, all, all. Select board can, and actually all, um. Said, a lot of the, the setbacks and everything can be adjusted. That's this select board ceasefire. Like if you had the old, the old A rod, you height was out, you could go height, you could. Encroach on your setback, you could do about anything. Make that property work.
So, yeah.
Construction will change the coverage of any buildings, musical buildings, public and private school buildings, it's defined above. Provision will supersede the article of use regulation, it becomes a regulation for this chapter. All other matters, on all other matters of provision, the underlying district shall continue.
So I think we just need to look at once and test cases and make sure it just works.
Yeah, so let's, you got any, Peg, you got any properties you're thinking about, let's, let's look at it.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, next meeting, if you have some ideas.
Yep.
We'll, we'll pull them out and make them work out to make sure that the zoning actually works on them.
Yeah.
Well, the mills, some of the mills have an awful lot of property, I mean, the one.
But they all, they all would fall under this because of the size of that.
So then they could do it, different things maybe, I don't know.
Question would be, there could be a question of, we're still counting the, the. Floor area as it was when it was built and not like if there's a section of a, no, that's, I don't think we have this, but let's say dilapidated. And everything caught, he's in and falls through. Are we still counting that as?
Yeah, should, you should.
I mean, the other thing we might want to do in this, uh. Allow them to change, have mixed use in there.
I would like that.
So we need to do that within that redevelopment.
Yeah, that would be a good thing.
Storage facility.
Yeah.
We put a battery storage facility.
Put it right in the mill.
But that would be a good thing now, if we could somehow.
Wow, that's all two birds.
And the town would get money from it, uh, 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 on top of, um.
Sixty. So we define, uh, I'm not, well, I'm not sure if you have a definition from these, but. I guess that, that part doesn't matter, is that, could that be potentially controversial or something that gives a part of that? And then, and then I'm going to lay the exception.
Something happened.
I think the idea of zoning, you know, in the nineteen twenties was, let's keep all these things apart from each other. Not have residences in industrial industry anywhere near each other, because there's, second thing is smelly and the first thing is picky. And everybody gets happier if they're separate, but I don't think that's the view. More about, you know, let's have people mixing and, you know, not driving so far and being able to walk to work and.
We have one mill up there that has a lot of, they're, all their buildings there, but then that's only like on. Maybe a third of the property, all the rest of it is, could be housing. And, and it's locked in, it's industrial right now.
Be great.
Well, that, and that's why I was asking the question, if there's a limit, I mean, if all of us, because I know that was one of the sites we looked at last time, there was a lot of. Horst and Warren.
There is, yeah. What's up, Peg?
The other thing you said once, I mean, this is totally different, you said, um. Sometimes, like the stationary factory in Dalton seems to have an awful lot of, uh. People that go and dance and sing and whatever, I wish there was something, somehow we could have. Like something here. Um, with some of the old mills, or, you, you know, that. I don't know if there's something that's built, that I could read about that might help me understand things.
Don't say anything adult.
Bar, you know, tavern dance hall or.
Yeah.
Commercial establishment. Bolt Cameray, is that?
Yeah, I mean, really, though, they could.
We have a whole section of, of adult entertainment in there too.
Oh, yeah. Things up at the stationary factory in Dalton, and I just.
And that's what we talked about, I was just pulling up my notes from.
Yeah, it's, um.
That, that's what we talked about, that's the other side of this, is making sure the use is listed in this category.
Okay.
That's everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we have, we've had that happen, where, yeah, like they, they excluded restaurant out of it.
Right.
Beginning, because everybody was very protection.
Right.
Protectionist about Main Street.
We. I don't know.
Walmart or, uh.
Yeah.
Home Depot goes in next door to Lowe's, they get part of the market share, it's just what happens to them.
Wow, contemplation.
Well, I'm excited, I, I think we're gonna make a lot of progress this year, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Any other topic?
Do you want?
One more? Go move, all in favor?
Thank you guys.
No, thank you.